You are watching Access La Porte County, Town 97. Coming up next is the October 14th, 2024 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Welcome everyone to the October Long Beach Town Council meeting. Will we please stand for public? Straight, dumb straight. May could you do roll call?
Present.
Shannon Woddek?
Present.
Kendra Bartlett?
Here.
President Joe Schmidt?
Here.
Anita Ravages?
Here.
Chief Swisbeck?
Present.
Attorney Littleby?
Present.
Claire Collins, I am present. And I believe Trista Hudson will be answering at some point if she's not already. Thank you. I have a couple of opening remarks. We would like to add that Dear Management to the agenda under Unfinished Business. And my only other comment is kudos to everyone involved with the newsletter, especially Kayla, our new administrative, police administrative assistant. Got a lot of great compliments and it's quite an impressive document with lots of information. So I hope everybody gets a chance to read it.
Or sign up for email if they didn't get it in your email.
Absolutely. Approval of the minutes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the executive meeting on September 9?
I make that motion to approve the minutes of the executive meeting on September 9.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the council meeting on September 9?
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments? They'll be limited to three minutes. Do we have any public comments on Zoom? Seeing none, do we have any public comments in the audience? Okay, thank you, no public comments. Let's move to committee reports. Police Department Commission, Chief Swisbeck.
Good evening. For the month of September, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 408 calls for service, when compared to 278 calls in the previous year for an increase of 130 calls. During the month of September, 10 incident reports were documented. The total of six individuals were arrested, one felony arrest for possession of narcotics, three misdemeanor arrests for operating motor vehicle while intoxicated, and two misdemeanor arrests for driving with a suspended driver's license. Overall, I've nailed the major incidents report for the month. As we move into the fall season, our deputies will be focusing on getting all of our equipment ready for the wear months, including all of our vehicles, and then also preparing to resupply all of our equipment and/or stock that we used throughout the summer season and getting ready for next year. Tonight, we're attending a joint training session with the Long Beach Fire Department out back in the Public Safety Building. I'd like to compliment Deputy Matthew Votepack, who arranged tonight's training, which is focused on autism awareness. Both the police and fire were going through about an hour and a half presentation tonight to better assist us when encountering calls with autistic individuals, how we can better manage those calls. So I'm very grateful he put that training together for both of our departments. There was not a police commissioner report, so nothing to report.
I have a quick question. On the, on your log, you show answering, answering calls for alarms that go off. Is there any number of limit of alarms that we answer? I mean, I'm not looking to penalize anybody, I'm just curious if, you know, now that people are gone or if the alarms go off?
No, great question. There is no number, however, what we typically do is I review the calls for service each week. If I find that a particular home we're responding to more than others, I'll reach out to the homeowners. And typically what we'll find is there's a faulty sensor or something going on at the home. So typically we manage those in-house. And I know the fire department does something similar to that as well. If they receive fire alarms and it's something that they're returning to quite often, we both feel the need to reach out to the homeowners and usually mitigate it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Just two comments too, Mark, for clarification. It came up last meeting about an arrest that was made regarding that. It was a home that he was involved with. It came, it was asked of me, was that arrest in a Long Beach residence or was that outside of Long Beach?
I have to go back and look at that particular call. I don't remember the particulars on that one incident. It may have been in a vehicle. I remember one in a vehicle, not particularly at home. We had one on a US 12 that we had apprehended an individual with some narcotics. But I can go back and look at the calls and send everybody an email. I don't remember residence, I remember vehicle.
Okay, just yeah, specific to the Matt arrest. Thank you. Town Administrator, your chief?
Couple items. Last month, we discussed the saw arm, the need for such at our Public Works Facility. That item I have asked Clerk Collins to remove from the agenda until we're able to gather some additional information. I've started to obtain at least two quotes, however, we have some concerns about the proposed location, the parcel of land at our Public Works Facility that we may want to look at an alternative location because there is a water main, a water mine that is primarily underneath part of a structure. And so we're looking at some alternative changes with that. So therefore I've asked to have that taken off the agenda until we can gather a little bit more information and come back to the council with such. This week, Thursday, October 17th, we'll begin interviews for the open position within our street department for the driver labor position. Members of the HR Committee and myself and the street superintendent will be conducting those interviews starting at 3:00 PM on Thursday. I'll go to this doc here probably tomorrow to the HR Committee with the names and the times of the individuals that will be speaking with. We probably had about 70 applications that we received in total, however, the majority of those were not qualified for the position. We do have a couple of individuals that either have worked previously or currently work in that particular line of work, so we're hopeful in these interviews. The heating and air conditioning proposal that was approved by the council last month, just today, they finished installation of four new furnaces and two new air conditioners here in the town hall. I'm happy to report that we came in in budget for that project. All the work is completed and the new humidifiers that replaced the ones that were not functioning for some time, we can already tell the difference in the building. It actually heats and cools much faster than previously because the system's been operational since last week, but today they finished all that work. And then Clerk Collins will be receiving that invoice probably later this week. Truck retrieve, just a reminder, scheduled for Thursday, October 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. It's on the website and also posted across the screen on the bulletin board for everybody's information. Last week, Thursday, the fitness center at the Public Safety Building was completed. Johnson Equipment delivered all of the fitness equipment, the decals and all the home interior things are up on the wall back there. If you haven't had the opportunity, I would encourage everybody to stop in and see the fitness center. It turned out quite well. We're very grateful to all the generous donations from the Long Beach residents that paid for the fitness center 100%. The fitness center was paid for through donations. The town did not expend any money on that fitness center out back for our police and fire department. Town insurance quotes, I had touched base with both of the companies that will be submitting quotes and they tell me that they are still working on the finalization of those quotes. Hope to have them to hopefully next month at the latest year December meeting. Community Center roof replacement due to the May storm, the hail damage. I met with JB West representatives this morning at 9:00 AM along with a member of the Community Center Committee. They will commence the work next Monday, October 21st, replacing the roof. That again is paid for by insurance proceeds and the town will be responsible for $1,000 deductible. The roof color will be the same as the current color and that work will be completed within five to six days. And we do have a building permit, I confirmed that with the building department today, that we do have a building permit for that work issued to JB West. President Schmidt touched on the town newsletter. Again, if you haven't seen it, a big thank you to our new administrative assistant, Caleb Shablowski. She has been with us for only three weeks and is doing an amazing job. She's turned around some of our previous forms that the town had and her creativity, we're just going to let her run and support her. She's doing a great job. She's already changed our payroll timesheets for 2025, so we'll be making some changes. She's getting the timesheets to clerk's office for review and then we'll have a new time payroll system in place for that as well that she's been working on. So a big thank you to Kayla and she's like a great member of the team. And that's all I have to report on the Town Administrator side. Rest of it will be covered in tonight's agenda.
Sure, I have one question again. Sorry, this is regarding the roof at the community center. I know we had discussions with gutters and the copper. This is, that's altogether going to be tabled for a later date, so whatever roofing is not going to impact the current gutters, is that the case or did we get a quote?
No, so the work that begins on Monday is solely the shingles, the ice and water shield, that'll be the roofing surface itself. To follow, two to three weeks after that, they will then come in and remove the current copper gutters. The discussion was, do we go with the square style copper gutters that we currently have or do we go with, I think they described as a K-style, more of a U-shaped copper gutter that we typically see in the copper industry for gutters? When I met with JB West today, I told Patrick with JB West to get ahold of the Neo, our insurance adjuster that's assigned to this case, to tell him that we want just to move forward with the U-shaped. There'll still be a copper gutter on the building, this is the shape, will be a little bit different than the current square one that we have. To replace it with the square gutter is much more expensive because it's not a common shape, would have to be fabricated. Our insurance company has been balking at the cost associated to it because it was like at least $10,000 or more over the standard shaped copper gutter. So rather than trying to meet the same copper gutter that's on the building and having to argue it out with the insurance company, we're just going to move forward with the copper gutter, but the standard copper gutter style.
Is that for the whole building or only?
The front, the front will get all the way around from the gym through the front, re-entered the Y, we'll have the new copper gutters, so you'll see those from the front. In the courtyard currently, we only have aluminum in there. The aluminum that are in there are in very good shape, so we're taking the funds from the insurance proceeds to put gutter screens on those so that our staff no longer have to climb onto the roof and risk injury when cleaning the gutters. We're going to screen those and then we're missing gutter on the eastern portion of the gym currently. And then the savings on not replacing the aluminum gutters from the courtyard should offset the cost of extending the copper gutters on the front to complete the copper gutters. Because if you were to examine the community center currently, the town never completed the gutters around the building. It's like we stopped at a certain point and we might have left off 24 feet of gutter that's not up there. But we are going to finish that now with copper, so everything blends over there more than us.
Can we repurpose what we're removing from the front that is still good copper to marry up with the side for the gymnasium, so at least it's all the same?
No, the stuff at the side of the gym in the front will all be new, real match. It'll all be consistently, and it'll have a good curb appeal from the front and it'll all look consistent.
Thank you.
Great question.
Thank you. Volunteer Fire Department, Dave?
Good evening, everyone. This is a report for the first nine months of the year. Fire calls to date, 69, that's in comparison to 59 last year at this time. 55 of the calls have been in Long Beach, five were due, but those were mutual aid support. And we had four other mutual aid supports in Michigan and Springfield. The activity for the month, we had three hazardous situation calls, which are typically gas leaks, power lines, and we had three false alarms. We were on standby for two mutual aids, standby for two number conditions. And year to date, I was looking at this sitting in the audience, we're at 39 fire alarm calls. So 39 out of our 69 calls have been false, or excuse me, have been alarm calls and they have all been false. And my thought is, I don't know if you have noticed this year, the, I'm constantly walking into spider lips. As I walk out of the house, I'm going like this, neighbors must think I'm crazy.
Or wavy.
Yes. And my feeling is, a lot of this could be because the detectors have little spider activities, some dead growth. And what I might suggest is either fitting a vacuum with a wand and pull some dust out of the unit or getting those aerosol cans that were aerosol. That's just my little tip. Average number of members per call stands at eight on the fire side, on the medical side. We're at 84 year to date, that's in comparison to 74 last year. During the month itself, we had 100, no, I'm sorry, we had one full rest, three injuries, three sick persons, and one medical alert. The average turnout of members stands at five for the 12 months. Our response time is still very good, 4.46 minutes on the fire and 4.21 minutes from the medical. And that once again is the time when we're toned down by the county until we have someone first on scene. The other news, sort of the health and being well for the fire department, we're still strong in our number count. Today, we stand at 28 active members. And since March, we had firefighter one and two, of course, and we did that in-house with our talented people. And seven new members, and we see their certification for that. And then right now with that class, they jumped into, the county put on a medical first responder class so we can have the first responder certification for our members. Four members went through that, so a lot of trained, a lot of hours. And once again, we're doing it just because it's our community and we care about our community. So that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Dave. Fire Commission?
The next meeting is the seventh quarter, ready for police commission on the seventh of November.
Okay, thank you. Public Works, Kendra?
During the September meeting, so no report.
Park Board, Kendra?
Just a couple of things. First, I wanted to give a nice shout out and thank you to both Dan Healy and Brad and Kathy Frelick, who are the, Brad and Kathy are, is the home adjacent to Stock 21 on the east side. They donated grass, it's not doom grass, I don't know, Cindy, do you know what it's actually called?
No.
It's beautiful though, tall, they were redoing their landscaping and they got ahold of Dan and Dan got ahold of me and the park board agreed. So they transplanted the grass to the side of the fence on the east side, which we've been, the park board has been looking at, putting some plantings right at that exact area for really the whole year. So it was perfect, they looked beautiful and just wanted to say thank you to both Dan for thinking of us and donating his time to do it and for Brad and Kathy for donating the grasses. And the only other thing is, at the park board, there was a plan presented for a community garden type situation by the Beach Garden Club, just preliminary talkings about that going on. And that's pretty much it, to the park board.
Thank you. Community Center, Anita?
Community Center met on October 7th. One of the items, the main meeting was about the leases in the building and rental increases, that'll come up later in the meeting. Beach Garden Club and people will continue to work on the inside of the newly redone planter boxes outside the front door. Estimates are coming in for repair of the wood sills and continuing trying to obtain estimates for the handicapped accessible bathroom. The rug in room 12 was requested that it be cleaned and there was an issue brought up by Councilwoman Wojcik about a sewer smell. There was an email that went out to everybody. There is a source that they have identified in the past. There was a question about when the smell was noticed and where exactly, so if anybody in the future notices something, just reach out to Town Hall and they can investigate it right away.
Thank you. Budget and finance, Meg?
We met on October 2nd, first order meeting. We briefly explained the lead and garbage rates that are kind of being looked at and discussed, and that's actually later on the agenda this evening, the discussion on that. The big thing we did was go over the budget and a few changes that we've made since the September council meeting. These changes were adjusting three salaries down to what the employees will be paid this year, which consequently, consequently changed some benefit expenses, line items. And then after speaking with the water superintendent, we lessened some water line expenses, some of their supplies, we moved a little bit of budget around for some computer maintenance software that they have, that we lessened some meter reading expenses. A lot of the water things can be plugged that in case something happens, so some of that budget is not usually, at least all, that is not really used. So we just did a little tweaking on that. And then we also adjusted the administrative lines and the general fund. We had had that at $200,000 in the budget that was approved in September and we've since brought it down to $50,000. The second reading of the budget will take place later this evening. And then our next meeting is November 6th at Long Beach. Questions?
Sorry, if I may, Meg, one thing, I apologize, I missed, I was working on finances, I was out of the office on vacation, is that if we could reach out to Carl Cinder's office, I know they have been working on it, but we're just a few months away from taking the delivery of the fire truck. We need to get the financing in place for that as well.
Right, I did speak with John Wall and Curtis, have a little better of the timeline. And Trista is aware that she needs to talk to Carl.
When do we anticipate receiving, as first quarter or next quarter roughly?
It's been moved to the middle, possibly third. So we've got time, but I don't think we're going to change our timeline on getting the financing established, so that will be happening soon.
Good, I just think you want the insurance company to know as well because we've been working on getting a quote for that as well, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Human Resources, JD?
Human Resources Committee met September 18th, finishing up the employee handbook. There's only two more sections to be reviewed. The committee is also recommending that before the handbook gets to council, that it is reviewed by outside council, by lawyers. We reached out to three attorneys, three different firms, two came back roughly at $1,000. I will forward those to the council for consideration next month. Our meeting on October 16th has been canceled, so our next meeting is November 20th.
Thank you. Tree Board, Ellen?
We did not have a meeting this month, however, we've been working on the trees that need to be serviced in the community and we have identified 30 of them. We have put that list together and have it out to be quoted on by three different companies, one being Maple City, the other one being Knowles and Sons, and the other one being John's Tree Service. I'm assuming I'll get the, hear something by next week, if I don't, I'll be calling them. Other than that, we're working on our newsletter and we're developing a back sheet that we would like to see go out when, to contractors and landscape people on the rules of, some of the rules that we have about trees and line of sight and all that. So that's all we're doing right now. Our next meeting is December 4th.
Thank you, Ellen. The Building Commission met on October 11th. Permits approved were 2208 Floramond for patio and fire pit, 3001 Loma Portal modifying the second floor, 1625 Lake Shore Drive for exterior stairs, 2131 Havendale for retaining walls, 1920 Monrovia for a new deck and a screened porch, 2049 Lake Shore Drive for landscaping, 2903 Mount Clair for a new home. Permits denied were 1601 Lake Shore Drive because of increased volume in the setback and 3007 Moore Road because it was over lot coverage and in the setback. And that was it. Any questions? Okay, moving on to the BZA, they met last week. They had a preliminary hearing, which was continued regarding putting in a high-end liquor store in the Hacienda complex. This, like I said, was just cast ons or another preliminary hearing. Should this at any time be set for a public hearing, we will do our best to let residents know so they can express their opinions, but I think the public hearing would be the time and place to do that. But I know a lot of people are interested in this issue. So next month, it would just be a continuation of the preliminary hearing. And that was it for the BZA. APC, Anita?
The APC met on September 16th. The only business was continuing discussion of the review to the 2016 comprehensive plan. McKenna, the company that did the 2016 plan, did submit a proposal and it was discussion among the commission members about requesting the Vice President McKenna, Paul Lippens, to attend our meeting October 21st and discuss and be open to questions about the proposal. And later in the agenda, I have a request for funding to pay Mr. Lippens. The next meeting is October 21st.
Thank you. Building revenue report, Meg?
For September 2024, there are 30 permits issued totaling $197,523 with revenue of Four electric permits issued totaling $861. Two street cut permits with revenue of $200. Legal expenses paid in September to Bragianelli St. James were $7,562.50. And accounting charges paid to Center and Company were $5,223.43. Now I guess for a motion to approve, please?
I'll make the motion. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Finished business. Dear Management, Kendra?
I was looking for something else. It's on a different topic here. Okay, just, just wanted to read some, just kind of facts. Don't worry, there's like, I wrote some stuff out, but I'm going to read as fast as possible. This is just in an effort to keep the conversation going and kind of spell rumors or just facts, not facts, what people, you know, think are options and things like that. So in regards to contraception, a few people shared an article regarding contraception success. The same article was sent to me by a few people. It's actually more of a research study from a, from a town in New York State. The study was heavily funded in many areas and had the support and teams of senior members of the United States Humane Society, local vets, and other research biologists. I'm not going to waste anyone's time arguing about the efficacy, or lack of efficacy of contraception as a method to control the deer population, because it is not approved in the state of Indiana. Repeat, my notes, it is not approved in the state of Indiana. So this is not an option for us now or in the future, unfortunately. I do wish somehow this could be incorporated into some sort of plan, but it's not. So again, as FYI, there are two forms of animal contraception, PCP and Gonicon, that are being used and tested in some towns in some states. But the Indiana DNR does not endorse or allow either form of contraception, and they have exclusive jurisdiction over all deer in Indiana. The DNR chemist's office would oversee research and your approval of this drug, and they are not even in active trials, studies, or have any teams, scientists, or people looking into this. If this is ever approved, it's going to be many years down the road. In conclusion, contraception is not approved in Indiana, unfortunately. And even if it were, it does nothing to reduce the population we have now. At best, it could control the growth at a slower rate in the future. So just to give an idea of its limited use, only six states in the U.S. have used PCP: New York, Maryland, California, New Jersey, Virginia, and Ohio. Most of them are, like in New Jersey, it's in Princeton. In New York, it's in East Hampton. In Maryland, is known as a leader in wildlife contraception, and it has research studies going on. So no, no town is using it as, that I can find, has, is using it as its, its method to control the population, only being approved in six states. So PCP does have federal approval by the EPA, but state and local regulations play a significant role in being able to use it. It requires extensive coordination with wildlife management authorities, faces regulatory, ethical, and logistical challenges. Many states that have approved it do so in conjunction with a research or pilot program to monitor effectiveness and impact. It is classified as a restricted-use biopesticide. So as a restricted use, it can only be administered by certified professionals, such as wildlife biologists, vets, and other trained personnel under specific conditions. Furthermore, Montana, the state of Montana plays a significant role in production and development of PCP, and they are the only place that can license and manufacture it, as well as train anyone who wishes to use it. The training programs conducted in Montana serve as a base for the research, and they work in collaboration with state and federal wildlife agencies to gather data on its effectiveness and help to support approval processes in other states. I'm just trying to see if I can skip over this. I tried. I tried to limit this a couple times today, but I feel like I can also do a better job of it enough. So state approval may be granted for limited use in specific areas for a set period. The timeline for state approval would depend on level of scrutiny and need for additional studies or public input. On average, the process can take anywhere from six months to two years. However, it can take longer if pilot programs or additional environment assessments are required. So there are no active efforts by the state of Indiana specifically pursuing approval or use of PCP or Gonicon contraceptive for deer management currently. Quickly, the states that do use Gonicon, very similar to the few limited ones from PCP, Maryland, New Jersey, Virginia has a trial pilot program going on, and Colorado is using it for horses only, no deer, and a town in New York. Just some facts here about hunts. If, just again, just to share information. Each year, the female deer produce 1 to 1.3 fawn. At minimum with this math, the female deer population doubles each year. The regular hunting season is September 15th to January 31st, and no special permits are needed. Just rules and ordinances of the town must be filed. We do have an ordinance that allows use of bow and arrow as hunting as part of the deer reduction program. There are professional hunters who do this type of deer reduction in other communities. Hunters are in deer stands and shoot at close range with precision. No flying arrows at a distance, no flying arrows in the distance they shoot is 20 to 40 yards. Crossbows are modern study devices that shoot straight like a trigger, and it's more quick and more effective than a longbow arrow. You must commit to a reduction for two to three years and then transition to maintenance mode. There's no way to tell what the current population count of deer is. This would involve trail cameras all over Long Beach, tagging of deer, and someone to monitor and count each animal as it passes the camera. We are in a deer reduction zone for the DNR. In fact, all of Northwest Indiana is. As part of this designated deer reduction zone, the hunter, each hunter could take 10 deer because of the overpopulation. Crossbow is the method of hunting used. There are no guns. It is the most humane method, with death occurring in 10 to 15 seconds. Hunters follow the arrow, retrieve the deer, and dispose of it immediately, usually under a tarp and a truck. Meat is then processed and eaten by the hunters or to other people in surrounding areas who are given to the zoos to feed to their big game cats who love it. The zoos and big cats are very appreciative of the meat. DNR did conduct aerial hunt at night with snipers and helicopters to reduce the national park population here. Beverly Shores conducts a hunt, as Doom Beach does too. Doon Acres also has done one. Doom Beach reduced their herd by 55 the first year, 36 the second year, and 11 the third. Now they are in a maintenance mode with less than five or six year, five or six deer a year removed. They have never had an incident with a flying arrow, or mishap with a deer, or many of the other rumors I have heard. Former state grants like programs in CHAP, like CHAP and DMAPP no longer exist. Town would need to fund a hunt, or it can be privately funded. Bloomington, Indiana does a hunt each year at 1,200 acre park over a four-week period. This cost is $28,000, $30,000 for a 12-acre park. For reference, Long Beach is about 800 acres. So using this math, the cost could be about $18K, but it all depends upon the number of households participating. The hunters are carefully selected, screened, and vetted by a hunt coordinator. There are trained hunt coordinators who go through a certification program. Hunting times are clearly posted and communicated. Again, dispelling rumors of walking the dog and needing to hide from flying arrows. Hours are 6 to 9 a.m. and 3 to 6 p.m. A half hour before sunrise and a half hour after sunrise are ideal times. Just a couple of things on diseases. DNR has detected EHD, episodic hemorrhage disease in northern Indiana. It's a viral disease transmitted by nosemans and usually fatal to deer. Humans are not at risk. Significant numbers have been reported in 22 counties, including Porter. Deer will show unusual behavior like distant orientation, dehydration, fever, salivation, and are often found near water sources. We recently had a deer at Sub-24 near the water that could have suffered from this, considering where it died near the water. We don't know. There was also a dead deer on Oak and Wallace Path that could have suffered from the same thing. Of course, we do not know for sure, and no one is testing. But it was observed, the deer was panting and salivating a couple weeks before that, or days. The property was vacant where their deer passed, but luckily, the neighbors, Brian and Matt Kenyer, were able to contact the owner of the property and tease as well to pay the fee and have it removed. The fee is $500. As a reminder, if the deer guys on your property are responsible for removing it, the DNR will not retrieve it nor will the town. And at Brian Kenyer, asked if I could read just a quick letter. He sent pictures, which we sent to the council, wanting anyone to see. We all know what that would look like. But I wanted to inform the town council that a dead deer was found in the wooded lot next to our home approximately two weeks ago. It appeared that the cause of death was disease, not trauma. I informed the police chief, and he contacted the lot owner, Mike Coffey, who then had to pay an animal control company to remove the carcass. This is another example of a real-life safety and health risk associated with the documented deer overpopulation problem in Long Beach. Both deer and humans are suffering. I supported control of hunts similar to the one implemented in Doom Beach to reduce the deer population to a safe level and reduce the associated property damage and health risks. This hunt would benefit all of Long Beach residents, as well as maintain the deer population at a safe and manageable level. I think that's pretty much it. I know we also did have a deer that was caught between the fence, I think two Sundays ago, on, on the golf course. Fire department had to respond. I think the police and the fire department joined, took care of that. So thanks, Mark. I think that was like the Sunday when they called you on that, when the poor deer's head was stuck in the fence, and they had to pry the fence open to get him out. The other disease, chronic wasting disease, we're aware of that, lyme disease. So effective wildlife and habitat management practices are important for mitigating the spread of these diseases. Again, I'm not, I'm not proposing anything. I'm just wanting to give two sides of, really just to dispel, I've heard lots of rumors about what a hunt would look like, as well as things about contraception. So I just wanted to share all that about each side. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2024-7, 2025 budget, second reading. Does this have to be open? I guess I'll look here and again. My microphone?
Hello, it's John Wall.
Sorry, President, what was the question?
Well, there's a public hearing set for this.
So Tristan and I spoke earlier, and there's no specific public hearing required tonight. That was done in the last hearing.
Okay.
If you so choose, chose President, he could allow public comments, but you do not have to. And you are, yes, in fire.
Yeah, I have no problem with public comments if anyone wants to be getting about our budget. This will be our second reading.
And that budget has been posted for public to view?
The Form 1 that you voted on September was posted.
Yep.
This is the Form 4, which is just a compilation. I can explain, I sort of did point out the budget, but the items that change, not many, and at that point, the budget can only be reduced. So.
Meg, just for clarity, you can move things around within the budget, correct?
Correct. We cannot increase it at this point. But we have decreased it slightly.
All right. And I think just for the public, that's important to know, that this is the budget that's been out on the website. So it has been.
Correct.
Shared.
It's on Gateway as well, which residents can go and view any of our state requirements on that website.
Yep. And previous, this year, we did vote on the approval to move minus, if needed. So that was also done previous. So just making that known to the.
Thank you.
To the group.
Thank you.
So Trista can chime in as well, but after speaking with her, the DLGF will look at our December 31st cash, and then they will look at the revenues we tell them, and they will approve our budget along with the current cash that we have. And then the council tonight is, again, approving on the second reading. And everybody would take, you know, yea or nay, or even abstain on that vote. So.
Just one question to Trista, if I could.
Mm-hmm.
The budget that is approved for 2025, is that based on any tax increases that may be implemented? Or is this based on current revenues?
So each year, the DLGF, the Department of Local Government Finance, decides how much statewide, each town, city, school, county's budget levy, property tax levy attributed to the budget, can be increased. This year, that number is 4%. So for Long Beach specifically, the MAC property tax that we received for this year, 2024, will grow by 4%. Now, could the council decide to take less than that maximum allowed? Yes. Would I advise you to do that? Absolutely not. For the town to survive and, and the council to provide the services that you do to your residents, it's strongly, strongly recommended that you accept that 4% growth for this next year. Some years, it has been down maybe to 3.5. There was one year that it was 4 and 1/2. But 4 is a typical average that happens. Now, when we talk about that, max levy, that's the total amount of property taxes that you would receive as a town. Of course, you divide that across your general fund, your motor vehicle highway fund for your roads, and your park and recreation fund. So those three funds are the ones that can receive this additional 4% growth in your property tax income. All of those funds receive other types of income as well that you know about. When a person, when a homeowner though looks at their bill, please remember that the taxes that they pay in cash are based off of the assessed value that the county assessor determines. You, as a council, of course, have no opportunity to weigh in on what a person's home value should be. The county takes care of that. Market growth affects it a variety of things. So when a homeowner looks at their tax bill, their assessed value will be there. That may be more than 4% higher than the year before. Again, you don't control that. I'm sorry if you hear the bell jingling in the background. My dog is scratching. I apologize. I guess she wanted to be involved in the meeting, too.
You can't see. You're good.
No, I thought maybe you could hear it, so it was interrupting. So the assessed value may increase. As assessed values go up, though, because that maximum levy is a fixed number, the tax rate will go down. Pure mathematical equation. As the tax rate goes down, that's great. The person would pay less of a rate. But again, depending on how much the value increased, the dollar amount that they pay may go up a little bit. All of that is a result of the mathematical equation. That's nothing that you can control. Again, because the county assessor determines those assessed values. So will taxes go up? Possibly. Are you voting for a tax increase? I don't believe the traditional sense of the word that you're increasing taxes with this budget, because you're not actively increasing the rate that they're paying. You're simply allowing the maximum levy to increase per the state-regulated value. Kind of a convoluted answer, and I'm sorry if it was a lot and long. I'm happy to break it down a little bit better if you have a specific question.
No, that answered it.
Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Okay, with that, I would make the motion to approve our second reading, ordinance number 2024-07, 2025 budget. You have a second?
I second the motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome sign's proposal, JD?
Thank you. What was distributed in the packet this month, and actually last month as well, is a formal proposal from Plant Environmental Associates, who is also the firm that was utilized in 2017 for the last time there was a rendition of a sign, welcome sign for the town. What this proposal outlines, as you guys can see, is that it takes us from the very rough concept that the committee put together and takes it to final concept drawings. There's no construction drawings that are being considered at this point. But this is, this is about taking our idea and really putting it size, scale, and dealing with realities of easements, setbacks, et cetera, to be able to get a working set of concept drawings. So the request is for total, there's three steps to it, data gathering of $350. A lot of that work had been done previously because of the 2017 work. The draft signage concept of 2,500, final signage concept designed for a total of $4,650 is being requested for the service.
My only question would be, where it says property and topographic survey provided by client, I think that's going to be a pretty big expense for those four areas.
This is where benefit of the prior work.
What?
This is benefit of the prior work that had been done.
Do the end surveys?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Then I don't, I don't have a question on that.
Is, is this in the budget?
Is this in the budget? For 2024, 2025, you're looking for us to approve this?
I'm looking for approval for 2024 budget.
Do we know where the money is going to come from? I think that's a question.
I would turn to, Meg, we have money, 20, what is it?
Forty-six fifty.
Forty-six fifty in general fund to use for this?
We will be moving to clean up some line item expenses in November, December. Uh, we also, we're going to be doing appropriation for one of the funds, for $20,000 that is capital. I, Tristan, you can chime in if you want. I believe we could probably put this to cap- to capital, but it's not in the budget.
No, it's a light, I don't know.
So we, we're close, we have a positive on our capital plan right now, so, um, Tristan, that's accurate, right? I think we were about, I don't know if I have that final version, but we had a maybe positive 18, but it could be a little less than that. So, I mean, we could, it's, and, I mean, we have enough cash that we could appropriate, which we may need to do, I'm hopeful that we will need to do that, you know, there's some salary lines that haven't been used, I was just checking, um, where you have to be moving, you know, to, for example, there's been some public safety expenses that were not in the budget. There's some buyer supply issues that were unknown, that just when the budget was prepared last year, so, um, I think it's a small enough expense that we can, we could do it. Was this not, um, residents, we're not going to give towards this?
We can fund it privately. It's not.
I just didn't know.
Fund it privately.
I apologize, I didn't realize what that's just. Was there any discussion with the town administrator about these, um, to replace what's there?
No, no other discussions besides the ones that held the town council meetings.
So there haven't been any public hearings or anything to ask what people want to do with, with all of this? And are we committed to, so this is just concepts that you'll get, so if we, if this money is found, and, and I, I don't think it was fair to Meg that she wasn't asked before the meeting to look for $4,650, but, so this is just for concept design, this isn't for the signs themselves?
Was there a question in there?
There is a question in there. Was, was there anything, you did not meet with the town administrator, um, I, I, my question is, this is just for a concept design, this is not for any signage?
Correct.
Correct? And I, I just, I'm not sure that, um, that I can approve this, with Meg and Tristan not even knowing where almost $5,000 will come from for, um, just signs.
J D said they'd fund, they'd fund it privately.
Great. I, I still think that the town administrator should be involved in this, other than just as getting the agreement, and it, you know, if you want to go ahead and fund it privately, I'm not sure where the public comes in, that, you know, just because some people don't like the signs that are there right now, it doesn't mean that any more people won't like the signs that the concept comes up with, so.
I mean, we did, we did put together a side committee, I've reported back to the council on the side committee. We've had discussion of that. I'm, I'm not sure what you would have preferred, if it's that much of an issue, let's bring it to a vote and, and dispense with it.
Okay, do we have a motion? Come.
What's the motion? So this is just to come up with a sign, this is not any cost for the signs, right?
No, there's no construction drawings in here, and there's no construction expense.
There is no construction expense?
Yeah, this is not about.
But that will come?
Yes.
Right?
And we have an idea after that, what type of materials we're talking about, what type of design we're talking about, and any other expenditures. That would come after a final concept drawing is concluded.
Okay, please. Okay, we have a motion?
Make a motion?
Yeah. Motion is?
To approve the funding to do the scope of study for the signage. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion?
Just make sure there's a clarification, so the motion is that the town is willing to fund that, and, and I'm not interjecting.
Nope, fair.
Subject to.
Thank you. I'm making a motion to have the town fund the scope of design and the study, to pull the information together, that will then go back to the committee to move forward with new signage. So it's to fund the design by the council.
To fund this, to fund this specific proposal.
Perfect.
Approve it.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any more discussion?
Is there any more discussion about funding privately, or we're waiting for a vote?
It's funding by the town, that's what the motion is. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Passes for a one. Um, Republic Services Contract Proposal for 2025. Chief?
Well, here's how we're for you, the form of agreement that was discussed, which essentially formalizes, but rather the piecemeal or an addendum to the contract that's been out there. This is the general form submitted, as chief, I thought, let me point it out first, the use of city, there's some grammar errors and some reference errors, but otherwise, um, the things that I normal over in terms of remedies and actual journey speeds, et cetera, those all, as the form are acceptable and the rest of it, you know, what, if you have any questions with regarding the terms, that was the time to do that, but the clock is certainly taking, maybe the extension in place.
Correct, I, I just want to first say thank you for getting this, because I feel like we were going to go off and just renew on a three-year term without having a contract in place, um, and one of my big concerns was failure to fulfill the contract, or fulfill our, their duties, that is now in here, so for the homeowners, I know we ran into a new recycling company who was failing to maybe pick up from all of our alleys and, and backstreets, front streets, um, and it got rectified because that was a county-wide contract. This allows us at least to have some of that say now, that if we got pushed back from our current garbage pickup, and they refused, we'd have some teeth to be able to walk and, and put forward a cancellation within that three-year, but the three-year still locks us in to a nice steady budgeted, uh, price increase, that's fair. So I thank you much for getting this done, and seeing that there's a cancellation, if needed, if they fail to perform, so thank you for that.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, moving on to new business, we have beach access for 2506 Lake Shore Drive. Let's see, Brad?
Good evening, I am Attorney Brad Adamski, I'm here with my clients Fred and Tommy Hackendall, owners of the property at 2506 Lake Shore Drive. There it goes on, thank you. Owners of the property at 2506 Lake Shore Drive that are here as well, in person, um, thank you for getting us on the agenda so quickly. Um, this is a project that has been through a few different iterations over the years, but ultimately we're like step one of step one. Um, there's, the Hackendalls are a little property at 2506 since 1978, the house has been constructed probably in the early 1920s, as many houses in this community are, it is in need of some renovation, and the step one, the beginning of that, is the existing septic is not going to be suitable, or really even, um, in a situation where it would be used, if there's going to be any resident renovation stop, so, or we can even, going with building commission, we've got to address the septic. The Hackendalls have been working with the Indian Department of Environmental, and, or sorry, with the State Health Department, David Ortell, and where we are with him, and he's asking for several solar bearings to determine the level of area riprap eventing in the area where the septic would be located. Uh, the riprap findings may change the grade of pitch of the new system of installing, so we, there is septic already there, but it can't continue to exist where it is overdone. I mean, it's going to be a new septic system, but it's not in a situation where there wasn't already septic. As with many properties along Lake Shore Drive, um, the grade makes it very difficult to do anything from the home. So I've got pictures here of the property, it says 2560 Lake Shore Drive, of course, it's 2506, uh, both from street view, and then from lake view, and then the stop, which we are requesting access to, is stop 24, I've got two pictures of those as well, so I've got copies for each council members to take a look at, it's a picture for evidence.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the first two pictures are the house, the first is the house on the street side, second is from the rear from the lake, and then you've got stop 24. So how far away is stop 24? This picture here will provide a little detail there. The Hackendalls property is what's highlighted in blue on this picture, and then stop 24 would be down at the bottom here, the same orange. We were hoping to have more details as far as the timing and the specific equipment that would be used on this in time for this meeting. Uh, the contractor has been involved with some hurricane issues that we've all heard about.
A time or two.
Yeah. Um, the last set of pictures I can provide to you are actually ground up the pictures of the, of the stop, and of the improvements that are already there. So it's, it's an unusual request, but it's not unprecedented, um, this council approved a few years ago for other clients' access on a different stop. Um, in that situation, they had actually accessed it, they needed to again, so they were kind of asking for permission and forgiveness at the same time, here we are coming at the front end of things, asking for permission. Um, the president that was established there, there were certain conditions that the council put on, um, the property owners, so that there was obviously any indemnification or liability or protection of the town, if there was any damage done during the, during the access, we would expect nothing less here.
So we're at G01, it's got to be done?
We were hoping this month yet, which is why we tried to get on the agenda as quickly as we could, um, the contractor, Bruce Woodruff, um, he, his last communication with us was that he, one, could make the meeting tonight, of course, but then he's pretty much tied up on the statement, so we don't know. But thank you for, again, putting this on the agenda, and I assume it's a good mistake.
So this is to request access at stop 24 to access the lakeside of the home?
Correct.
Right.
Because there's really no other, there's no access from the street out there at home. Stop 26 for, is probably a steeper grade, so stop 24, I mean, both are probably pretty close, deep, we're distant from the actual property. Um, but 24 has got the better open access with that extra pot that's owned by the town that's right there, and how the, the path has been, you know, improved going down towards the lake.
Madam President, if I could just add some information for discussion, and just for, I guess, overall thought, all of you that should decide this, back in the summer, the stop 1718 project, the same contractor that Attorney Damski is describing, Woodruff and Sons, did the work at stop 18 for us, therefore they needed beach access. Um, we used the beach access at stop 24, brought several pieces of heavy equipment down stop 24, then to the immediate west to do the work, and then upon completion of that project, the owner, Bruce Woodruff, had reached out to my office, and I had met with him personally down here, and he donated an entire semi-low rock that you see in his photos, to, um, put that beach access back into probably a better state of condition than what it was in previously, and we are very appreciative of that. Came at no cost to the town, that being the rocks and the, um, work that was done to apply it to that stop. That stop is utilized by the, um, police and fire department as our beach access for our, um, emergency ATVs and BTVs to get down onto the, the beach. So I do appreciate the homeowners and Attorney Damski coming forward and asking for permission, because I know if it was granted, then Woodruff and Sons would put it back, if not in the same condition, better condition than what it is currently in, and they've been a big help to us in getting us access down to the beach. A little bit unrelated topic, my office had been reached out to last week about the use of this stop also by homeowners along the northern portion of Lake Shore Drive, that utilizing it to haul their beach movers for their jet skis up and down, um, from the backs of their homes up to Lake Shore Drive, and then, um, taking them for probably storage for the winter months and that. So we've got some complaints about it, because actually there is an ordinance that says, you know, no motorized vehicles or pieces of equipment down, or something for this town council to consider, similar to what we do with our golf, our permits. If this council decides to continue to allow access down onto the beach for approved access as we were asked for tonight, maybe we consider, um, an ordinance with some permits or fees that will then go into a fund that would allow for, you know, maintenance of our stop that in the future, or in this case, maybe you ask for a bond, that there's a bond would play similar to what we do with our street cuts, we ask that there's a $10,000 bond in place anytime we approve a street cut, um, just things to consider into the future, because this probably will be the last request coming before the council. I myself am not against it, um, I am very empathetic to the homeowners of all Lake Shore Drive, that they do need access from time to time, but it has to be reasonable, and the town has to be protected, um, that our driveway is, you know, protected and put back into the condition. So just off the consider.
Can I add to that before? There already is a provision in the, in the code that requires a $10,000 bond and registered contractors, you guys are familiar with Woodruff, so I'm not going to advocate for, against whatever they're doing, but there is that requirement. I do want to add, as Brad suggests, I know he uses the term generally, these are a case by case basis, you don't have precedents where you have to do this, um, prior councils have decided to do this, I caution you, because it, there's been good and bad from this, so, you know, there's one that the park board continues to, to struggle with and has had to take some action, and I think that'll get resolved this week, um, but mostly because the park board has had to move forward, and they've made every effort, but I do think that a license agreement, in this circumstance, until you change the ordinances that provide for the things that Mr. Damski was presenting to you, that says that they will rectify the town, um, you know, that, that, as you know, the park board has taken great, gone great lengths to improve many stops, so we want to make sure that we're not damaging any property, but, again, you'll, you'll be covered, and we probably want to make sure, if the homeowners are accepting responsibility for that, but, you know, we, we probably, in addition to that, we can tie it to fit to that license agreement and indemnification agreement.
So that's where I'd like to move to make a motion to approve the use at stop 24 by Woodruff specifically to gain access, so that we open for conversation after tonight?
Still in discussion?
I can make a motion, make a second motion, and then open for discussion, either one?
Yeah, that's fine.
But go ahead, you have something to say there?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we, this, I would feel more comfortable if this goes in front of the building commission.
Let's go on to.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, we're not approving, we're just access. Also, you don't know the equipment.
We don't know the equipment, but we do have, the building commission does have a hundred dollar fee for beach access, so we do have that on the fee schedule. I would be willing to, uh, approve this at the council level, but send it to the building commission for their review, and with their approval, I'd be okay with it.
Yeah, the reason it's here is because the town owns, so you're, in the, in terms of the agreement, you could authorize the building commission to enter into it, but the reason is before you, is because you, you're the owner. to enter into it, but the reason is before you is because you're the owner versus with the other owners, and then building commission can prove, as you suggested, all the details. And I think that was the intention.
Correct.
Absolutely.
And that's where I'm like, the access, and I think we should specifically say right now by Woodruff, so it's not just access, it's that fact that it's Woodruff accessing it, and then we move to the building commission, so that way we're also voicing that we're not providing access to every homeowner right now on Lake Shore Drive to access for their jet ski or mobile horse, specific to this situation by that specific contractor.
Could I go one step further because, and I do know that Bruce is dealing with hurricane times two down there, and they have a major, you know, their corporate office is in Great Intend. So the only downside of doing that because of process and time is what happens if Woodruff comes back and says they can't do it. So maybe you say, ask approved by the building commission, because then they will make sure that it's a properly licensed contractor and the building commission dictates, and then maybe authorize the president to sign any license agreement subject to the building commission's terms, to make sure that everything is within the building commission's requirements. But of course, you can make your motion as you want, but there might be a possibility that Woodruff doesn't end up doing this.
Because I can't repeat all that, can I make a motion to approve what Chris kind of just outlined to say we will grant access based on the building commission's
Approved.
Approval and observation of the project.
Of the contractor and the equipment.
Correct.
Can we though increase the bond? I mean, $10,000 is unfortunately nothing these days. You know, that poor girl hit the park bench and it was $4,000, and we've got limestone steps there, and that's a tricky stuff.
The order that it only requires a $10,000 bond for them to register. You could require an additional bond, so maybe it's, and again, I think we've said subject to what the building commission. So they could put that as a condition, or they could make sure that their policy names the town as an additional insured, so that you're covered that way, but I think all subject to what the building commission approves.
Yeah, I just think we need a little more protect, I mean, unfortunately, it sounds like $10,000 is a lot, and then you look at a price of those limestone steps that could be crushed by a huge piece of equipment like that, and that'd be like 50 grand.
I'm good with that. So, okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Public safety building septic system quotes, chief.
Back in the month of August, the Indian Department of Health had approved our design overall scope of work for the installation of a Presby sanitary septic system for the public safety building. Back in August 15th, I had sent out a letter that went out to seven certified Presby installers through a list that was provided to us from the La Cora County Department of Health. In that letter, I specifically asked that prior to Friday, September 6th, that knew all quotes be received, so therefore I can present at the September 9th town council meeting at 7:00 PM. I did not receive any quotes, therefore I might ask that the matter be tabled and then brought to the October meeting. I had to once again go back out to several of the contractors, some I spoke to personally, others through either email, some reached out to me. In an email that was addressed to the council today, you see a brief explanation on all seven contractors, several of which either did not want to quote the project because it was too big, others, they are extremely busy trying to finish projects for 2024 and did not want to quote the work, and therefore I have only received two quotes to date. However, the two quotes that I did receive, I did share with our consultant, our civil engineer, John McQuestion, and Soil Solutions, who in fact drew up the plans for this specific scope of work. He indicated that he has previously worked with both of these companies and has no reservations working with either of them. And again, they are certified installers with the La Cora County Department of Health. So therefore I have no reservations recommending either of these two quotes, too. In the email that you received today, you'll see that there's an explanation that this project is in the capital expenditure plan. It was budgeted at an estimated cost of $100,000 to complete the scope of work necessary to put in the system. Of the two quotes received, Stewart Septic System, their quote was $72,500. Sunset Septic and Excavating, we received a quote of $94,000. However, their quote does not include the necessary electrical connections to the various pumps. There are electrical connections that are necessary on both sides of Oriole Trail, one here at the town hall and another across the street just east of the pavilion that is near the transport. So therefore, it is my recommendation to the town council that we accept the lowest bidder at $72,500. You also seen earlier today in my explanation to each of the council members that I'm asking for your consideration to budget this project $10,000 higher at $82,500. The reason I'm asking for that is not to delay any of the construction time, just in case as we begin to dig and install this system, if we encounter any obstacles, I want to make sure that we have contingency in place. My office would authorize any additional expenditures over $72,500, and an email will go out to the town council explaining such to you as well. If we encounter anything over the $10,000, I would then ask that the council hold a special town council meeting where we could then convene and discuss it further. In speaking to Scott, the owner of Stewart Septic Systems, and all three times we're on the phone today, he explained to me there's a couple of projects ahead of us. I did ask, will we have this project completed by the end of this year? He assured me that would not be a problem to do so. And again, it is my recommendation to approve this tonight, not to continue this manner because it is my fear that if we do not approve one of these two quotes that are good for 30 days, we would lose either of these two contractors, having to go back out for this leave of quotes and therefore delaying the installation of the necessary sanitary needs for public safety. You weren't happy to answer the questions.
I have a question. Sure, are you, do you have a question or are you moving?
I'm going to go ahead and ask.
My question is on the quote only because again, I've never dealt with septic. It says that this board is, this is with the understanding that we will, if needed, be able to call in the city to use their back truck. What's a back truck?
So two years ago, the public works department purchased a back truck that we use to be able to remove soil from the surface down to what we call core out soil to do locates to, when we put in a sign, like a stop sign at an intersection, we can bore down with the back truck. We don't have to call and locate for that commonly because as we go through with the back truck, it's very easy to watch what we're doing without damaging anything. The back truck, I did ask that question, what would our back truck be used for? And the only use that would be used for is if once A11 is called and any utilities are marked in the area, they would ask that our back truck come in and help locate any potential gas lines or other utilities underground. Otherwise, we're not doing any directional bore in under the road. They'll have their own directional bore contractor because this project and the scope of work does require a specific size and a specific type of sanitary line that's only installed on Oriole Trail, and it will need to be directional bore. We opted with that rather than cutting Oriole Trail open and causing the trench in the pavement. We've asked that this project be directional bore, and unless there's any unforeseen things, we should be able to get this line underneath Oriole by directional bore.
So now that I know what it is, I can say that's a good thing to use because I had a water valve replaced because we upgraded our service, and they saved our maple tree because they didn't have to dig around it. They were able to suction the dirt around it to access it. So now that I know, that's a good thing.
And that's exactly what it does and also what cleans out all our catch bases throughout the time as well. That's the primary use of it, is to clean out our catch bases so that we no longer have to contract out the cost of this. We can now do it in-house. Cost of the piece of equipment, I believe about $110,000, but it will pay for itself in several years because we can now do this work in-house.
And then my last question on this quote is 10 grand that we're going above, which is great. What is our, is there risk, is there previous projects they've done where it could go over $30,000?
I would hold on, it's like any other construction project. Typically, you have about a 10% contingency plan built into any project, sometimes even more than 10%. I just feel comfortable enough that at least my office has the authorization to go above the 72.5. As you can see, this is about $30,000 less than the next competitive quote because the other company had bid it at $94,000. However, there's probably $6,000 to $10,000 in electrical work that's not included in there. So even if the other bid is $100,000, we're still 17.5 lower than the next closest bidder.
And it's $100,000 in the budget, so we're?
We're under budget.
Okay.
Which helps our, helps our overall capital expenditure plan. Most recently, the backup generator at the Brewster Station came in, about $15,000 under budget, and now this project will be coming in under budget, which helps our overall capital plan.
Thank you. I would make a motion to accept the Steuer Septic System 12 of $72,500 plus $10,000 bumper not to exceed $82,500. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
I do just want to say thank you, chief, also for the note that you talked to John McQuestion from Soil Solutions. I think that was important, too, that he's worked with both of the companies because cheaper isn't always better. And in this case, the fact that he has no concerns with either installer and that the electric was included where it wasn't included with the first proposal. So thank you for putting all the work into it and getting this moving forward like it should. Thank you.
One thing I did forget, and I don't want anybody to be surprised, either, probably more likely in the spring, I'm worried about the overall landscaping to peel out the park. This company will apply black dirt, however, they will not do the seeding. The black dirt will not be the finest black dirt. That's, we may have to spend a couple thousand dollars in the spring doing some landscaping around there and working with the garden club. I just want everybody to know there may be some, you know, beautification around it just to make sure. That's not included in the quote. They will have black dirt covering the surface and everything else, but I just know as beautiful as our park is, we're probably going to want to spend a little bit of money in the spring to spruce it up.
Do they make things big enough to hide that big presby?
Well, it's our best.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. November 5th election use of the gymnasium. I don't think we need a motion. I've already let Joe know, and so we're all clear there. I told him they've got to set up the night before. I think we're good there. We don't have to make a motion for that. Okay. Leaf collection dates for the fall 2024 are November 4th to December 1st.
Yes, we have, once again, here, the work of Keely Landscaping, who has been our vendor for our quarterly fall cleanup, fall cleanup for the town. It will start on November 4th, and residents need to have all of their leaves out to the edge of the roadway by the summer 1st. Again, no rocks, branches, sticks, concrete, pumpkins, anything that would damage our leaf backs. They are very, very expensive to repair. And again, I would like to thank Kayla, our administrative assistant, who created the beautiful flyer. Before, we just sent out a word document with a few words on it, and Kayla went to the great extent of putting together the flyer. It's on the website, it's on the bulletin board across the street. So again, some more her creativity at work. So thank you, Kayla, for getting that out.
Can we send her out to make sure there are no stick stones and grasses and everything else thrown in those piles of leaves?
I will keep calling. I usually have to call several residents every year in the street department, which means that it's been, unfortunately, so.
No, one year somebody put a deer head in there.
Ooh.
Yeah. Ooh. Okay, garbage rate increase. Ordinance required, discussing the rates.
This is my speaker.
Is she there?
So with the contract that was approved today, there are the first increases that residents will see on their rates that the town is being charged for our service. We, in the past, had a ceiling of a unit charge that the town was not going to charge above. Our increases were so minimal over the last few years that we never went above the $16.25, I believe that's what it was, unit charge cap. With these new rates, which we are probably due for based on our history of having a public for 12-plus years, I believe, we're going to need to pass these rate increases on to residents, and after some discussion, instead of doing this unit charge, the unit charge cap, we would like to, with Chris Willey's help, set an ordinance that will just state the increase plus some overhead charges that we have for those next few years.
And just to dovetail off, I think most of what gets presented is probably covered in sections 9601 and 9602, but our points were to, and Meg has been pretty avid about trying to make things clear to people as we move along, so that we can start off with, you know, these increases, make sure everybody understands, because it's a little difficult to read and follow as it is.
And also to add to Chris, the ordinance and code he's referring to has not been changed, this user charge, since 2020. So it's been many years.
So is this just notifying us or is this?
Yes.
A motion or anything? We're just going to request an ordinance be drafted?
Yeah, I think ultimately it's just giving you a heads up. You know, you can approve it all at one meeting if everybody's here and you have the agree in November, or you can do it over a couple meetings, but just really kind of giving you a heads up of what's coming.
And if council would like to discuss or do that later on, but letting residents know that this is going to be happening come January 1st of the new year, and that there will be subsequent increases for '25, '26, and '27.
So that rental is for current leases renters of the community center and anyone else who wishes then to?
Oh, so this is garbage?
It's a different.
Right.
Oh, I crossed that one out.
Don't worry. Yeah, so this is the Republic contract.
I know I already crossed it off. Done. No, and we talked about the garbage already. Approved.
Any other questions? So I will work with Chris. Mark and I have already discussed, it's just coming up with what we charge for our future capital expenses, also that, you know, we have, that the town doesn't make money off of our contract, but covers our expenses. And any planned or unknown capital items that we may have in the future. We'll create those, the money in that, those funds.
Thanks, Meg. Community Center 2025 lease increase proposal.
Last week, the community center committee met, we discussed the potential rental lease increase into 2025.
We discussed the potential rental lease increase into 2025. As council and the public were aware, we've shared this in numerous meetings throughout this year, we continue to make capital improvements at the community center. The overall cost for the insurance for the building has increased. Gas and electric has increased to include all the other services that we receive over there for cleaning services, dumpster removal, things of that nature. So therefore, the community center during their discussion has proposed that any rental, aside from our newest lease, which has not yet been there a year, could see a $20 a month increase for 2025. The YMCA, which has four rooms that they rent from us, would see an $80 per month increase. And then in May of 2025, when the art studio reaches the term of their one-year lease and they go to renew, then the $20 additional per month could then kick in in the month of June of next year. So it's the recommendation of the committee that the council approve the recommended increases to the community center tenants, which equates to just another 5% increase in the current rental.
I make a motion that the increases be approved as listed.
To clarify, Mark, so the Y's overall increase is $80. It's not $80 for each of the units?
No.
Twenty. So they're getting the same, okay.
Yeah, twenty times the four, so $80 per month they would pay in addition to what they currently pay.
Right, because they have four, gotcha, okay.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I made a motion to approve the increases.
I'll second it for discussion. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Ordinance number 2024-08, amend salaries and wages ordinance, 2024-01, first reading.
Yes, so Trista and I were discussing the other day. Originally, we were just going to present 2025 salary ordinance, but we've amended the 2024 ordinance to correctly reflect the employee changes that we've had this year. And Mark and I also spoke, we probably, we may not have needed this, but because of the changes that were made this year, all of the salaries fell in current salary ratios, which is good. But the third page has been updated with the new employees' names and the police promotions. We have a new position of corporal that was added. Retroactive dates were added on page three, you'll see, because the state board will look to make sure that the town has paid our employees according to the salary ordinance that we have on file. So we're just making sure that things are in good order and for your approval. So any questions on this first one? Which again is just, go ahead.
I just have a question because what I read here is that it's retroactive back to February 12, 2024, but I thought we agreed that it would be from approval forward, not retroactive.
So if you go to page three, we actually have two employees that are listing twice with a beginning, with an ending as deputy and then a beginning as sergeant and corporal. And then saying our new administrative assistant as beginning date, but the first change was from February. So that is sort of a vague statement on when our first change happened.
Okay.
Again, we had a resignation, we had a reshiring, and we had two new officers then that came on board, and then we had a promotion and a new position added. We had another resignation and another new employee in September. I think that covers it.
Yeah, to Shannon's question, there's no employees receiving any retroactive pay at all.
Yeah, fair. It was just that first, the third now, therefore, be it resolved comment, it said, so I just did not...
Right. And I guess we, I also added our new building inspector, that says online as well. So he was a new addition in, I think, February, March. So it pretty much covers the building department and the police department. So I would ask for a motion to approve this salary ordinance if there are no other questions.
I'll make a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Big motion?
Yes, second, officer.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes on first reading.
2025 salary ordinance is the next one, 2024-09. And this, you'll notice if you took the two ordinances, Mark graciously got this started for me and then it's been kind of an effort of just reviewing the actual wage amounts. You'll see all the names are correct on page three. We have included a 4%, the increase that was approved tonight and also in September. And again, just cleaning up the salary on that page three. And that corporal position is added. Any questions on...
I just want to add, the good news is this is about three months ahead of schedule for it. It's generally been in recent past, so that's good. It gives you opportunities to not have to rush and do it by unanimous consent. It gives the public opportunities to review them as well as you.
So my question would be that when we brought last month, again, I don't want to poke a bear, but the clerk treasurer, I thought we were approving the range.
No, the range already existed. We approved $65,000.
Well, in the ordinance, there's no range listed previously. It was a flat amount and then we said we were going to approve...
Whatever range I had, it already had a range in it, so I only see a flat.
It's a budgeted range.
Yeah.
If you, yeah, if you look at the very specific line item, it's quite broad within the budget, then the ordinance ties to the specific salary.
Okay.
That's the difference between the two.
Thank you. But then I have no other question.
This is just point of clarification from a legal question is if it passes unanimous on first reading, it doesn't go to a second reading?
No, you have to suspend your rules. If you chose to approve them all in one night, you would have to vote unanimously because this is introduced, so to pass it all in the same meeting that it was first introduced. So if it was on the agenda for first reading, then so that's the way seemingly it was campaigned. Somebody could have made a motion to suspend the rules and adopt it.
Should we have just, should we have done that as a point of process on ordinance previous on first reading?
From my perspective, it isn't necessary. You have two months to accomplish the things that you need to do. So you're ahead, the good part is you're ahead of schedule. In the past, for instance, there has been a rush to do everything in December. So that's your call. You can make that motion. You could reverse and go back if you would like to go back to the previous one, but you're fine doing it this way, too.
Okay. Just clarification process.
Do we need everybody here? Does it need to be a, it just has to be a quorum vote, not an unanimous vote?
The majority of the, yes, essentially.
In case no one's hearing.
So going forward, you're okay as long as you have three members. If the intention is to approve it or...
Or could we withdraw?
Just to be clear, JD, if I could just add a clarification, maybe in the back of JB's mind, there is no employee right now that's waiting on 2024-08 in order to be paid. The ordinance for the amendment to 24 is really to clean up and make sure that the paperwork reflects what, what all of the prior votes of council have been regarding wages this year so far.
Understood.
Trista, we did, do we need to open a public hearing and do comment or not? Okay, thank you.
Would an alternative be to withdraw the motion and to suspend the rules, as you said, so that it would pass tonight on first and second readings? Is there any benefit to that?
You could, but you don't need to. That's everybody's intention, but you're fine doing it this way.
Okay.
And because your agenda has been out, I honestly wouldn't suggest that you leave it as is because the judge just said first reading and that the public has an opportunity to review it.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Sorry to take this over here.
There is a motion.
I'm going to make a motion. The Community Center garbage board question. I'm going to make a motion that we pass ordinance 2024-09, 2025 salary wages on the first reading.
I second the motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Police vehicle replacement in 2025 trade 2016 Ford Explorer.
There are three very, very important pieces of equipment for law enforcement. One is our vehicles for patrol operations and transportation, our radios for our communications and our weapons to protect the public that we serve and to protect ourselves. Our vehicles in the 2025 capital plan, there is budgeted funds for a replacement vehicle for the police department to trade in one of our 2016s. Typically, this request would not have come before the council until 2025, except for in the last month, both of our 2016 vehicles have come upon maintenance concerns and both were had to be taken out of service and taken to the auto park for dealership in La Porte. Both vehicles were evaluated. One vehicle is currently not in service, parked in the back garage due to the fact that it needs approximately $11,748.68 in repairs. And then the other vehicle, the other 2016, is currently clamping on tires and is undergoing maintenance repairs there. We're getting some repairs done and then we'll return the vehicle probably by the end of our December when our budgeted funds for 2025 start to become available January 2nd and complete the necessary work in that year. So therefore, I sent the council an email. I was very descriptive in the need for a new vehicle to replace one 2016s. As you know, not only do we provide services to the town of Long Beach, but we are also under police contract with the Doolin Beach Home Association and the Town of Michiana Shores where we service their police department. As we go into the winter months, one of the things that we have to be prepared for is that unfortunate incident. One of our patrol cars would go through Highway 12, a car we drove tonight, be involved in a motor vehicle accident, and the police vehicle would be taken out of service. As it stands tonight, I don't have a replacement vehicle to put into the fleet as we typically hold two vehicles in reserve in our police fleet. Our fleet is only seven vehicles. Five vehicles are taken home by the five full-time officers and then we have two vehicles in reserve. The two vehicles in reserve are pool cars that are used by our five reserve deputies and their nine part-time deputies. Those vehicles are on the road each week and as you know, our vehicles are on the road 24 hours a day, Saturday to the week. Therefore, it is imperative, from my perspective, that we give this order in the queue with Dodge so that we can receive this vehicle sooner than later, just in case any unforeseen thing wants to happen to one of our full-time vehicles that are in service currently. So we saw three quotes. Upon soliciting three quotes, we reached out to Michigan City Chrysler Dodge Jeep. We reached out to the LaPorte Chrysler and to John Jones Dodge. Michigan City was unresponsive. The other two had sent in their quotes. You'll see in the breakdown of the quotes that there was a little bit of a difference. The base vehicle price where the LaPorte Chrysler was $43,939 and then John Jones came in at $41,775. The upfit with all the emergency lighting, Chrysler and LaPorte came in cheaper at $13,102.88 and then John Jones was slightly higher at $14,250. And then the difference that subrayed the two quotes was the trading value for the 2016. LaPorte Chrysler is giving us $7,500 trade allowance and John Jones is only giving us $4,500 trade allowance, so a $3,000 difference. Therefore, making the LaPorte proposal $49,541.88 compared to John Jones at $51,525.50. However, this does not include the radar and the vehicle graphics that will be applied to the outside of the vehicle. Both of those items will be paid for by the general operator with the police department in 2025. I did receive a financing quote from John Jones. Their interest rate was at 7%. I reached out to Horizon Bank where we currently have the town's funds and Bill Furtler that provided us with a interest rate of 4.10. We had asked to take out the loan for 48 months and 60 months. The breakdown of that came out from annual payment of $13,452 for four years and then the annual amount of $10,980 for five years. I met with Clerk Collins in discussion with her. It is both our recommendation that we recommend to the council that we move to purchase the vehicle with a four-year loan from Horizon Bank at the 4.10 current interest rate. Obviously, that could change. The cost there comes to actually receiving the vehicle could go up or down slightly because I don't anticipate receiving the vehicle until probably the first quarter of next period. Until then, we'll have to maintain our fleet to get us to that one, therefore not wanting to extend this any longer. The other thing is the overall interest, you see I provided that to you. If we did the four-year compared to the five-year, we would save an additional $1,078 in interest by taking out the four-year loan. Any questions? What I'm looking for tonight is just authorization to allow LaPorte Chrysler Dodge to move forward with placing an order for a $20,25 Dodge Durango V6. And once it is ordered and then finally received, there will be some fitting of all the emergency lighting and sirens and stuff, and then we would receive the vehicle and all of this done. Questions?
As a part of process, Sourcewell wasn't used?
No, instead of using Sourcewell, we had utilized two of the local dealers and then also in speaking to both of the dealerships, the government incentives that would have been applied through Sourcewell have been applied to both of these quotes, so the government incentives have been applied to the overall base price on these.
And then just as clarification on the process with Sourcewell is trading value would be null?
Sourcewell could assist us with trading value. We would have to look back to the independent dealers to receive that. I followed the same procedure that law enforcement agencies across the counties, driving counties, utilize. They make sure that the government incentives have been applied and then they independently contract, contact each dealer to have them solicit quotes for the vehicles. And then we also sent a video, photographs, all in, identification numbers for the vehicle that we wanted to trade, and then we provide that to them to get the subsidy, the trading value.
And then lastly on that is, order goes in, point of delivery, how far in advance would you be notified?
So LaPorte Chrysler, I spoke on Friday. I asked Matt Magnuson his anticipated delivery date. He tells me that the V8s are being produced sooner than the V6s. Since we opted on the V6 because it better... Since we opted on the V6 because of better fuel economy and less maintenance issues in the future, he couldn't give me an anticipated delivery date. However, John Jones Dodge, when I spoke to Tim Troyer at Dodge, John Jones, Tim anticipated he could possibly have a late November into December, but could not give me a guarantee. And then with upfitting, he said there was a potential he could receive it the latter part of December, but the latest probably January. I anticipate the Fort Chrysler would be January, February before we receive the vehicle.
Yeah, because that's.
There's a lot of that, though, that's coming from the manufacturers.
Because that impacts whether this is a two-step process to approve the vehicle or approve the vehicle and the financing, right? Is that if we had a little more time, February, take a chance if perhaps interest rates coming down, or if it's going to come sooner than later, we may not have that choice.
The financing wouldn't get approved until once I know the vehicle has been received and is at the upfitting stage. So at one of our future council meetings, I can come back to the council with an updated financing rate. Bill Gerter from Horizon Bank last week connected me with Kim Lidding in his office, who would be handling the financing on their behalf. So Kim Lidding and I, as soon as I get a better anticipated delivery date, I believe we can lock in financing up to like 30 days in advance of taking delivery of the vehicle. But for now, we're just providing an estimated financing at 4.1 is what they would give us today, which is considerably less than the 7% we give the dealership.
Do we, what my question would be, because this is a 2025 allocate budget, what is our risk if they come to us and say mark your cars in and it's November 18th? Are we then obligated to take possession of it in November without budget until January 2025?
No, that vehicle, by the time I, if I call them tomorrow morning and authorize the order, by the time they receive the vehicle and the upfitting, upfitting right now to build our police car, because they're going to get the basic vehicle from the manufacturer, they then have to apply all of our lighting, our sirens, our radios, our gun mounts, everything that needs to go in that, that's a minimum. Both of these told me that it would take them at least six weeks to do the upfitting. So we're only low over two months left in the year, so here's six weeks just to build it and that's going to take them a good two months to even receive the vehicle, maybe six weeks they get the vehicle. So six and six is 12 weeks out. So as soon as I would see this is probably January. I, I don't anticipate having to go to Maggie tell her I've got the vehicle in December. I would just ask them to hold on to it until we make our first payment in January. Either way, we're going to have to finance through the bank. So if we finance December 2024, January 2025, that one month of difference, we've got it built into capital already. I don't think it's going to be a financing nightmare for us.
Yeah, I just make sure we don't approve it now in case interest rates drop another 25 basis points and we can achieve that savings.
But we're not approving the funding, we're approving the order, is that it? So I think we can move forward with approving the order.
Yeah, it's just the purchase is what I'm asking for now and then I'll work closely with the clerk treasurer's office and the council. As all you know, I'll email you soon as I know closer to the delivery date than that. I just want to get this into queue with Dodge manufacturing because there are very little Dodge brands that are out on the lot in price. The 2023 for us, the 2023 was maybe $500 less than the 2025. It makes no sense to buy a 2023. It's going to be two years old in 2025. Granted, it's brand new, it has no miles on it, but the trade-in value in the future, I don't think it would be who the town to buy a 2023, get on the road in January 2025. Right now, there are no 2025s that are available. Every police department's having to order their equipment for next year.
So I make a motion to approve the placing of the order of the vehicle for 2025 funding.
Before you go forward in a second, can I suggest if there were going to be a second to that, that you add and authorize the president to authorize any documents required so that she decide.
Do you feel comfortable with that, Ms. President? Then I make a motion to approve the ordering of the vehicle and any subsequent documentation signatures that President Joy can handle on her own.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have to add the price in there or not?
No, because that'll be set, that does propose, you're agreeing to the one that's submitted.
Excellent. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to new business, Comcast letter of support.
So the Comcast Corporation District Representative that we work closely with, Philip Goodrich, had reached out to us asking that the town council consider directing a letter of support for Comcast to pursue opportunities for grants that would then bring upon funds for high-speed internet for every loser family. Therefore, for some of the families that are currently without Comcast internet service, they're working on a grant proposal and they're looking for support from La Porte County cities and towns. Obviously, they were one of the first towns that they had reached out to and they sent me an example letter. They're just asking that you consider this and if so, putting it out on the town letter there and then emailing it back to Phil as they submit their grant. It's no cost to the town, they're just looking for a letter of support.
Sure, do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't see any harm in that. Comcast's got all the money in the world. Good to give some. Some harm, maybe they're trying to do a good thing, but yeah, I make a motion to, Mark, I guess you'll write that letter?
Sure.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. House and Associate Services Agreement, Amendment Number One.
So the proposal that's before you has an amendment that was added previously. The council had approved this proposal and a grant opportunity came about a couple of weeks ago. Actually, it was after our last council meeting. We actually were going through some grant opportunities that were out there. Brad Minnick and the House of Associates and myself began to discuss this particular grant opportunity, which is from the federal highway administrations. It's for funds to assist communities with safety improvements to the roadways. Therefore, it could assist us with centerline road striking, placement of crossbars at stop signs at intersections, pedestrian crossings where we could apply pedestrian crossings at intersections on roadway as well. So I had reached out to the council president and asked for permission to pursue this grant opportunity with the understanding that there would be a slight cost for House and Associates to assist us because they maintain all of our pavement management and all of our pavement information. So Brad Minnick began to work with myself, our street superintendent, Tom Dolph. We had to provide accident information for some various roadways we cross on the beach. Brad then submitted a proposal for approximately $77,234 to apply epoxy road striking to many of our roadways. The funds that the town would have to utilize to match the 25% required by us would come out of the 2025 motor vehicle highway fund that we already have launched in the budget for next year. So we already anticipated doing some road striking next year. This particular project, these funds, would now allow us to take what we are already going to spend and receive 75% more in additional funds to do even more roadways in the community, which is a bonus for us. House, their proposal that's before you is not to exceed an additional $4,500 in engineering fees to complete this allocation. So I'm just asking for approval to approve the proposal that's before you. And as the similar engineering is done, you'll see those invoices coming before the council.
Does the $4,500 come out of the motor vehicle fund?
Meg, I think on this one, we're probably going to take out of the capital as a direct bank because next year for CCMG project, the 2025 capital plan, initially, we had about $180,000 of anticipated engineering fees and construction management. We had increased that to $200,000 to give us an additional $20,000 so that we were not under budgeting that. So I would propose that probably the already budgeted engineering amounts for next year in the capital plan, that when this invoice does come in, that we would take it out of the capital plan would be my recommendation.
I agree. Okay, thank you, Meg. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the House and Associate Services Agreement, Amendment Number One, in the amount of $4,500.
I'll second that. Is there any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fee for McKenna Associates for comprehensive plan presentation to the APC.
APC met and we have received a proposal to update the 2016 town comprehensive plan and the committee decided that they would like to have Paul Lipens, who's one of the vice presidents of McKenna, up here at the October APC meeting. He charges an hourly rate of $155. He agreed that they would, that he would be able to come. So we're looking for not more than $400, which would, I'm not sure if he will bill us for his travel time. So I'm just looking for the money to pay him to come and talk to APC and answer questions.
So I just will say that I'm like appalled, actually, that he would ask for $400. We're paying him.
I didn't say, I'm saying just not more than, I'm sorry, Kendra.
I'm just talking. So I'm just like appalled that he would have asked for even $155. We're possibly going to pay him $20,000 and it's his job to pitch his business to us. Like, I wish I could charge my salespeople that I'm pitching all day long. Like, I just, I can't believe he's, I would, I'd prefer not to pay anything, but if anything, he can join on Zoom for 20 minutes. I mean, I can't believe he's asking for $155 to come pitch us so then we can pay him $20,000. That's part of his job.
The cost is $14,500. It's not $20,000 and if you don't want to pay it, I'll ask him to come on Zoom and.
What's $14,500? Do we have that proposal?
It's, well, it's the.
Have we been, have we received that proposal or only APC?
We haven't even asked for a proposal. He, that's what, he's going to come to the APC and talk us about how the new, how it would look to do a new comprehensive plan. So we, in it, we like this deal, we sign up and he gets $14,000.
Plus he gets, yeah, confused with why we paid him to come present his proposal to us.
Me too, no one else. I've never, I don't think we've ever done that before. I mean, how many times has Woodruff sat here, House, all the people come? We don't pay them to propose to us. I mean, that, that's, I'm just shocked that he, that he did that.
I withdraw. Thank you.
Any council comments? Well, claims approval, Meg?
Okay, for September town checks, number 20944 that was voided and then 21042 to Water checks, 55101 to 5521 totaling $162,451.30. September payroll, $67,988.80. I ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.